What was put in the bank versus what was collected? There's only one check and I didn't take it to the bank. Waited till the other day to take it, so with the rest, some of the rest of it. So it was short this month, it'll show long next month. Ready? Close meeting, order. October twelfth, seven thirty-five P M. Those present. Jaren, Chris, Susan, myself, Rex. Two guests is Catherine Wilkerson and Echo Lindjes from. Had a brain cramp. Uh, super generate report please.
Oh, it's not changed any really since last month. I mean, there's no flow. Dry weather has solved the problem of flowing, so that helps out on the expense out there for testing. You know, our quarterly testing. So, EPA was still on the high side, but it's within reason. You know, it's always high in summertime, so. I did mow it. Well, I think that was stated last month that it was mowed. So, uh. There's some weeds out there, but I don't think it'd do any good to spray this time of year.
Not going anywhere.
They're not going anywhere now. And there's no other problems that I can see anyway. And I haven't heard anything back yet on the license thing, which it may be clear up into March before they contact me. On anything before they get ready to, to, uh, do the new license. I don't know how much they'll change. Won't know till then. Whether they'll change anything or not, I don't know. I don't know whether EPA's changed the rules on some of that stuff or not, on limitations.
So when we got the paper signed and then.
Yes, yes.
And then we got it sent in and that's way before the hundred and eighty days.
Way, uh, yeah, before the hundred and eighty days. And, uh, have taken care, took care of that last month. Where, when did we do that? Was that after the meeting? I'd have to go back and look on that.
You want a hundred percent sure?
It may have been after the meeting. But they acknowledged that they received it, scanned it and sent it. That's the way they wanted it, would rather have it at Jeff City. And, uh, so anyway, they turned it over to whoever's gonna be in charge of writing up the new license. And, uh, they would be back in contact with me if need be.
Everybody had a chance to look over, I guess I was already there. Chris?
Yeah.
Everybody had a chance to look over minutes from previous meeting? Any objections or mistakes? Get a motion for approval please.
Motion approval minutes.
Jaren makes motion to approve the minutes. Chris seconds? Vote? Okay, everybody's in favor of the minutes.
Okay, bills, you got them right?
Yep, and there's the bill from, from the stamps for last month too. I brought that with me too. But it was on last month, so. Yeah, it is. Every, every month for the lights and. It went up, uh, a little over two hundred dollars when they raised it the first year, so. Well, they raised all the lights five dollars, uh, security light, which here's forty-one, I believe, so then two hundred and, two hundred and five dollars.
I think the light bill went fifteen percent.
Yeah, yeah, it went up to.
Make motion to approve bills.
Chris, take the motion to pay bills.
My second.
Jaren seconds? Those in favor?
Any opposed?
Opposed. Kent, Jaren and Chris are four. Susan's no.
Financial. Everybody had a chance to look over those. Seeing mistakes or any corrections that need to be made?
There is an eighteen dollar mistake.
Yeah.
That one check was in the box on the last day, only one, and usually there's more than one. And so I didn't make a special trip to Edina and it went in the bank, so.
I thought you said it was fifteen. I thought you said it was off fifteen.
No, he said eighteen.
This time, but I meant earlier.
No, well, I didn't deem to if I did. It was one surger.
So, the six fifty-three is off eighteen dollars?
Yes.
So that's six thirty-five.
Six thirty-five. But it'll be long next month. Unless somebody waits till the same thing happens again, till it's put in the bank.
Yeah.
And some don't always, some don't always, some don't always get paid on the fifteenth, by the fifteenth. Some don't pay at all, so, you know, I like those.
I'll make the motion to accept the financial report as given, uh, plus, or, uh, as the, uh, mistake which has been corrected.
You can't make a motion.
Yes, I can.
Have some air proche, can you?
Yes, yes.
You can still.
I see.
Kent makes a motion to, uh, approve the financials. Jaren seconds, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Susan's opposed. Okay, I sent in the passer bills to the collector on September eighteenth. Which the amount was, uh, thirty-six-hundred eleven dollars and ten cents, which that shows in the, on the sewer, at the bottom of the sewer. And for two thousand twenty-two, there's two that are owed, which totals to one thousand ninety-five dollars and twelve cents. And the total, which would be forty-seven oh six twenty-two, that's owed to the city, plus a bill five thirty in October. Five hundred thirty dollars in October.
Why so low? People pay their annual?
Yeah, there's, there's twenty, twenty-seven to twenty-eight that pays on a monthly basis. And then every once in a while, somebody pays in the middle of the year. Somebody pays twice a year. Um, or several that does that.
How much is oh forty-eight? How much is oh forty-eight?
No, forty-seven.
Forty-seven oh six. Twenty-two. But then too, on the ones that are in twenty-two, there'll be an added amount for interest and stuff. Which we don't know what that is because until they go in to pay their taxes.
So, has everything been paid then through two thousand twenty-one?
Yes.
Nothing? We owe nothing in twenty twenty-one?
No, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
Got it.
I had to renew the entity registration on sam.gov. You have to keep a active, it has to be done every year, active registration through the government to any time that you accept any kind of government money. I don't think it actually has to be done after the money was accepted. But anyway, if the city ever wants to do anything more, it was quite a process to get it done in the first place. So I renewed that. They send me a notification and I renew it every year. There's a lot of my personal information on there, which I didn't like that, but anyway, that's, that's the way it is. So that's been taken care of. And, uh, let's see, already stated, I was sent in the form to Jeff City for the renewal of the license. And Linda Woods sent us, uh, a form to actually all the cities in the county. There was a mistake on one of the section, let's see, section. Uh, seven dot two-two-zero R S M O. And, uh, it was wrong. It was, there was a typographical error when Brent was in there. Anyway, she sent a new, uh, what do you wanna call it, new contract with the city. And, uh, she needed it back pretty quick, so Kent, Kent came and signed it, and I had to sign it also to attest that it was signed and sent it back to her.
Is that it? That you sent her?
No, no.
That's what she sent you?
No, this is the letter that she sent stating what the problem was. We'll look at it. It's kinda fine writing for us older people. Her glasses don't work good. And I think maybe J W Frankie has got possession of the property.
Not till December, he said.
Oh, not till December?
Yeah, I talked to him a couple of days ago.
You went ahead and put up the signs?
Yes, yeah. He's waiting for the letters to come back. I guess there's five or eight, I can't remember how many he said, different owners. And they all have to sign off on it.
Right, yeah.
So he's waiting for those to come back.
I'm sure he'll do some work on it whenever he gets, gets a, go ahead to clean up that, at least anyway.
It'll be quick.
Uh, yeah.
I expect it'll be a quick process.
Guess they'll have coral in there?
I don't know. I mean, the basement thing, I don't know what they'll have to do with that. There's siding on there, asbestos siding, I think, so they'll have to do something, they'll have to take it off and.
Was it that slate stuff?
Or slate, slate, which is that, well, it's that asbestos, same thing, I think. So, there are rules and regulations on that. I'm not sure what that's all pertains to, so.
So what did this change?
Just that one.
Just that statute.
Just that one statute is all it changed, and it'd been that way for several years. But she found the mistake and thought that maybe it needed to be corrected, and so she sent a new, uh, agreement to all the towns. Just to make sure that everything was kosher, that they could collect the taxes, and then send, send them to the cities.
So it didn't really change much?
It hadn't changed. It didn't, it didn't change anything.
The dot was in the wrong place, because I don't remember. I, I did look it over, but it was the same numbers.
Oh, okay, uh.
They added a zero.
Added a zero, is what it was. I, I, I misread it myself.
It was seven, zero, two, two, zero.
Right, right.
That's the new one.
The new one. The old one was seven point two-two-zero.
Yeah, but the new one is seven, zero.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
That's what I thought it was.
And this, she said she would send a copy back of the agreement. But I haven't got anything back. It's been, it's been, what, a couple of weeks ago since we did that?
Hmm, probably at least.
But she had to send it to all the cities and was trying to get it done quick, as quick as possible, you know, before tax season. And right now it's tax season, so they've gotta figure up all that stuff, the valuations and all that, so get all the taxes out, so. This, here's the list of the delinquent sewers for this year. Does anybody wanna, you want me to go through it? You want me to tell everybody whose it is? No?
No.
No, okay.
Please don't.
I brought, I brought it just in case. That's all I have on that.
Whole business.
You got the sign going on?
I have not. I'm gonna call them again tomorrow and find out what the holdup is. But I have not, um, the good guys will do it. It's just a matter of calling and telling them, I need to know, we need to know the price, and we need to vote on what the price is gonna be for them to cut the glass and, and Jeff said he would do it. But they didn't know, they have to sublet to get the glat, or get the plexiglass cut, because they don't do it there. It's such a big piece and it's thick.
It's not that, gonna be that big a deal to do it, really.
No, I mean, we can, I mean.
If I had some help, I could, I could do it.
Wouldn't take very long to do it.
Alvin, Alvin's got the sign, his possession inside, so.
Foreman is slowing down, so I mean, I'm gonna be home before dark, hopefully.
But the other side, on the other end of town, it's getting kinda bad.
Getting sunburned.
Well, it's not broke, but I mean, they're getting, showing a lot of, a lot of wear. They've been up there for a long time. Probably between fifteen, twenty years, I would guess. I can't remember when they put up, Jason and Jerry put them up, put the, did all that. And I can't remember Gil, well, it's been longer than that because Gilby was on the board. And that was back pre-two thousand, and some guy painted them and, you know, the city would put them up, he would paint them and furnish them and wouldn't charge anything, so.
Probably a nice parlor from getting them all.
I don't think they're standard. I don't think they're standard.
Sounds too much for that.
Yeah, they're faded pretty, they're starting to fade pretty bad. And I don't know, you know, it's, it would probably cost between two and three hundred dollars to get a couple each, to get that size of signs made.
I know the vinyl for, this is kinda off the subject, but we did price vinyl signs for the Christian shirts.
Right, right.
It was a single sign, single sided sign, aluminum vinyl, was three hundred dollars. And they brought the sign to us. The one out here that's a double sign, no, it was seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, that, the signs are not made out of, I don't know what they're made out of. Some flexible. I thought they were aluminum, but Jason didn't think they were, uh.
The, oh, art signs?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a vinyl.
It's a, some sort of vinyl. It just lasted really well. It just got the edge on it, but, uh, but anyway. And the flower boxes are just.
They're rotten away.
They're rotten away, yeah, they just.
But I'm afraid if we're taking flower boxes off the bottom of the posts, they'll be rotten off too.
Well, it's possible.
So, I mean. There might be something before it gets real cold or we can't do nothing. Get an evening or something, go out and look at them.
Yeah.
And see what we need. If the flower boxes need to be gone, then get rid of the flower box.
Yeah.
I know it made, made it look a lot better as you was coming into town. Little, made it look a lot better.
You'll really put a new sign out there. We're gonna do something like that though, is there?
Well, exactly.
Maybe I'd ask if there's one of the cares that might wanna rebuild that for you.
Let me try that. I don't know if you ever did. Put an ad in the paper, I guess. Anybody else, I mean, to rebuild the welcome signs at Novley?
I could probably do it.
Like for, huh?
I could probably do it. Get swipes and all that stuff.
Well, I mean, we've got enough, I mean, we could all do it, if, you know, when the time slows down, just wait. Like I said earlier, we're down to eleven hundred on beans and five hundred on corn, and we'll clean it down.
Yeah, it's not gonna make much difference this, rest of this year. I mean.
No.
I mean, it doesn't have, it's not something that's an emergency.
But we probably oughta get that vinyl piece from Alby and get it laid flat. I don't know how he's got it sorted.
Well, he said, well, he said he was gonna lay it flat, so I don't know. Anyway, he took, he stopped by and told me that he was gonna pick it up if that was all right, and I said, as far as I know, that would be fine, so. He said he'd take it down and put it in the shop. And lay it out, is what he told me, so. I mean, he, he was just willing to help, you know, so.
Anything else on the sign deal? Anything else on the whole business?
About the budget, did you call anyone?
Yes, I did. And if we, this is what I got informed, if there is no budget that was ever in the works when the town was established, there is no need to have a budget because the financial statement is the same thing.
And that's what every other town board does. I've already talked to them. I've already talked to other town boards.
And then as far as Bobby Clark's deal, I called her the same day. She called me back.
Who's Bobby Clark?
She is a tax accountant in Edina. I called her on the, that's what I was looking for, the dates. She called me back on the twenty-first day of September about the budget. She said she did not want nothing to do with getting a budget. She said the city of Novley does not have enough money to create a budget.
Exactly.
Although, I prepared one for free, so.
Well, I reviewed that and you can't even add, right?
I didn't even add it up.
It's right here.
I didn't even add it up, right here. I had it.
You take your income and your expenses, your numbers are wrong.
Excuse me?
You got two forty-nine, two zero three eight.
What are you talking about?
And twenty-eight forty-five on here.
Where?
It's not mine either, honey.
No, that was my copy, and it was my own stuff that I was writing on there. Has nothing to do with what you're talking about.
Is that not the income and expenses difference?
There you go. That's it. This was my original copy. Two forty-nine was something else. This was a, two oh three eight was something else. Twenty-eight forty-five was something else.
If you do the math, it's the income and the expenses difference.
You're looking at what's written on here, and you got my copy of what I wrote. What's typed up right here is the three-year average of what our income and expenses are by fund.
I can read it.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're not understanding, because when you, when you get a budget, everyone goes through and says. Well, I think we're going to, uh, have more against MFA oil, because the oil price is going. So then we change the budget, and when collectively, we have all put the, the numbers together that we can agree on, then we adopt a budget. Based on that. First draft, first draft, right here.
I know how a budget works. I know how a budget works.
I don't think you do.
Can I have my copy back?
Yeah, you can have that one. These are my notes.
All my notes are on there.
Well, then don't start writing whatever I put on here, thinking that you know what you're talking about, because you don't. I'm the one with a degree in accounting, not you.
What degree?
I have a degree, a bachelor's degree.
Prove it.
I have also, prove it.
Yes.
I don't need to prove ne- anything to you. I have also worked for two CPA firms. I've been the controller of two large corporations, and I've retired from Microsoft after thirty-five years.
Good job.
I don't need you to tell me that I don't know what I'm talking about.
You don't need to tell me I don't know how to work a budget.
I'm telling you, this is what happens, and this is how the process goes. I put together one because nobody would do anything. Three years average, three years average. There's obviously mistakes, because we're not gonna spend thirty-eight dollars on tax prep.
You're easy subtracting and addition.
Okay, whatever.
So how do we know these averages are right?
Look, look them up. I don't care. Look them up.
Okay. I'm just saying, if you take thirteen seventy-six minus thirteen forty, or thirteen four two seven, you get three forty-nine, not two forty-nine.
I don't even know where you're talking about.
That's your total income minus your total expenses for the three-year average. That's where you got that number. You do the same for each page, that's where that number came from, and that's where.
What is that number, do you think? What is that number?
I just told you.
No, what do you think that number is?
The difference in income and expenses.
Profit loss by fund? Yes. That's exactly what it is. It's profit and loss by fund.
Okay, that's what I said. I don't know why, I don't know why you're already.
Average by three years.
That's exactly what I said.
Whatever.
All I'm asking is how do you know these averages are right when you can't do addition and subtraction?
Nice try.
Anyway, the town's in the black and all the expenditures, money's running out.
Well, if you think the town's in the black because of the money in the checking account, or the money that we make each month? Or by the year?
Because of the money in the fund.
Money in the checking account.
Money in the funds, right here.
Money in the funds. So basically, money in the checking account, but.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Same difference then.
Okay.
We're almost twelve thousand dollars up for the year. It's been working. Why not keep the way it's going? Every other town runs this way, why can't we run this way?
No, they don't.
I've talked to them.
I've worked across this country, and that's my, I'm a subjectmatic matter expert on this. Don't tell me every town does it, because that's not true.
How the big cities do it. I talked to the other counties.
It has nothing to do with big cities.
And this area. This is how they do it, they go off the financial statements, they approve it, they go on. Just because the big cities do that, doesn't mean we have to do that.
Okay, big cities. Right. Whatever you say. You must be right. You would know, you've read the rules, haven't you? You would know.
Good, thank you.
You have all that experience, you would know.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, anything.
Did you call G D P? Or did you just call Bobby?
I called Bobby. About twenty-first day of September. So she actually called me back the twenty-first day of September, because it actually come up the number on my phone, it said plus one.
Yeah.
And I'm like, what is that? Well, she was nice enough to leave me a message, and I got to a stopping point. And I called her back within a matter of minutes. But she didn't want to have. She said she didn't wanna do nothing with it, because there is. Federal? Federal guidelines that they have to go by, and she is not certified to do them federal guidelines.
Can I just read this to you?
You read it every time.
Well, you're not getting it, not a single cent of public money can be spent until his budget has been formally adopted. Following procedures set out in statute sixty-seven dot zero one zero. While there are no budget police or squads of inspectors general making sure that everyone complies. That doesn't mean that this requirement cannot be enforced, city funds are public money. John Ballard recar- uh, recounts that some years ago, a small city had no city budget and one cantankerous citizen. The citizen filed suit. The court only had to glance at the law before freezing all of the city's income and outgoing. The city couldn't pay employees or its bills, everything was put on hold. The city quickly scratched down some figures and gave them to the judge, he was not impressed. Step by step, the city had to go through the statutory procedures. Remember, almost every entity, even a city, has a cantankerous citizen. That's straight out of there, the rules. Rules and regulations for Missouri's fourth-class city.
You're always talking about going to the last budget, what is the last budget?
We don't have one.
Well, then we go with the financial statements, as he just said.
That's by month.
Okay.
Budgets are a yearly thing. They're yearly.
This is how every other board in the.
Budgets.
Runs.
We haven't any trouble paying any bills either.
Budgets are yearly. I'm not gonna argue with you anymore about it.
You have been arguing.
I'm trying to, actually trying to educate you, but I'm done with that. You guys can just suffer, whatever.
Suffer what?
Suffer whatever.
Suffer what? What's that even mean? You've been threatening us for months. You can't threaten the people.
I'm not threatening anyone, deal with your.
How are we gonna suffer?
Deal with your stuff the way you wanna deal with it. I will continue to try to get us in compliance, whether you like it or whether you don't. Whether you agree with it or whether you don't, it doesn't matter. That's why I ran for this position, and that's what I told the people when they voted for me, that's what I'm gonna, was gonna do. And that is exactly what I'm going to do, if you don't wanna do it yourself, that's on you, not me.
They asked you to run to create a budget? That's what they asked you to do? Are you gonna work to get every other town into law, regulation, whatever? Or are you just gonna do it for this town?
I'm an older woman in this town, period.
We run the same as everybody else.
I'm an older woman in this town.
So why aren't you having a fit with them?
Why should I?
Well, you said they run different.
I did not.
You said that they don't run the same way we do.
Who did?
You let, it's on video, re-watch it.
You mean, like, the people are bearing, posting their financials in the newspaper, you mean things like that, like Hurdland? Putting theirs in the newspaper, you mean like that, like Edana doing that?
Do they have a budget? Do they have a set budget?
I don't, and I don't care.
I've talked to them.
I don't care, I don't, I'm not, I'm the Hurdland City Council, so it doesn't really matter. I don't care who you talk to, it doesn't matter, the law's the law, it's right there. Do it or don't, I don't care.
Understand it's the law, but if it's not implied from the start, we do not have to do a budget.
And you've made that comment before.
That's not what it says.
Well, you, that's what you've said before.
What, what's that?
You said we go back to the original budget.
Yeah, and when there isn't one, you create one. If there isn't one, you create one. It's not a difficult task, not at all.
We deal with a certified accountant, not you.
Fine by me, I'm good with that, I don't care.
They don't have the money today.
Pay for it.
I'm gonna pay for it?
Somebody is, if that's the right you want.
Why should I pay for it?
Why should I?
I never said you had to.
I'm the one that spent my time, my personal time, I didn't charge anybody for it, I didn't do anything else. I took the last three years, end of the year amount. Put it together in Excel, let Excel average it out and total it out, and that's what you have. I made no changes to any of it, because it's not me that makes the changes, it's us as a collective group. We make the budget. I got started, if you don't like it, then go pay somebody else to do it, that's, that's your decision, not mine. I voted against it, and I'll vote against it again, and I'll vote against paying it again.
We don't have the money to pay, so we're not gonna do it.
Then why would you look, look a gift horse in the mouth? When you have something to start with, and something to discuss from, and changes that you can make. That you think will, will be beneficial to us, and when we all agree, it's a budget. It's not hard, it's not difficult, it's what everyone does.
It's gonna be impossible for us all to agree with you.
I don't want you to agree with me. Those are my numbers, those are numbers from the financial statement, those are numbers that I just made up.
I never said you made them up.
Make your changes, we'll discuss the changes.
I've looked at it.
So what do you want me to do?
I don't want you to do anything.
I'm not. Not as far as that goes, you're on your own.
Oh, I am for what?
You're all on your own, for being in compliance or not being in compliance.
Well, you keep saying, honey, everything's collective, wouldn't you be part of that?
What, making the budget?
No, you keep talking about.
No, that, why do you think I say no? Really, why do you think I say no?
The first two months, financial reports. So. Go ahead.
Go ahead, what?
Go ahead.
Go ahead and what?
Go ahead.
I know. And have.
So we need a move on it, or whatever?
Town doesn't sound like it.
To, um. Stay the way we've been doing, not to approve budgets, we go by the financial statement, basically.
I don't have the money, so I don't see any other option.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion, motion to continue.
Keep the financials the same.
Using financials as they have been used in the past.
As a budget.
It's essentially a budget, it might not be a line item budget, but it's essentially a budget.
It tells us.
With all the expenditures. And all the intent, it's right there.
Uh, okay, sure.
We're not Microsoft, we are the village of Novely. City of Novely. We're not Microsoft. There's a reason they have a budget. This works from meeting to meeting, it tells us what we need to know.
You know what I did for Microsoft?
I don't care what you did for Microsoft.
Well, then, you really shouldn't try to tell me that I don't know what I'm talking about.
I never said, I said prove you have a degree, that's all I said.
Yeah, I don't have to do that.
Well, then I don't have to do anything.
Prove you have one.
No, I do not have a degree in accounting, and I'll say that.
I know.
I have other degrees.
I know.
No, you do not know what degree I have. No, I have more than associate's degree.
But. I thought you went to a junior college, you don't get a, a four-year degree from a junior.
How the hell do you know anything about me?
Be surprised.
I went to a junior college.
You'd be surprised.
I went to a four-year college.
This, this has nothing to do with city business.
Sure doesn't, sure doesn't, but he just wants to keep attacking me, so. Too bad, I'm not gonna sit here and not stand up for myself.
Chris has made a motion to keep doing what the city's been doing. Is there a second?
My second.
Jared seconds, those in favor? Kent, Jared, and Chris are in favor, and Sue's opposed.
Here, let me hold my hand there.
Any other new business?
I thought we ran old business still.
Are there any other old businesses?
Any movement on the A R P A fund? Do you have any ideas for this?
Yeah.
Schematics? Thoughts, ideas? Nothing new?
No, nothing's changed, as far as what they can be spent on.
Is there a way? That we can do?
That I know of, anyway.
Does Marling have a list of? What were s- projected to spend the A P R money on?
It's on the, it's on the website. It was listed in last month's.
Just do a Google on A R P A funds in Missouri, and you'll get it.
Broadband, uh, playground equipment, storm surge. They've got some. Disaster things that they've added to it, that doesn't, Novely's not in that, so that doesn't apply. To Novely, so those items are basically, as far as I know, are still the same. Unless, do you know any different echo?
Edana just, uh.
Is, is different than, than, are theyers federal or something regulated?
It's all our, but it's, I mean, it's the same, it's coming from the same places. Got the same regulations on it, the only difference is, they got a lot more than you guys.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Um, but, I, I feel it figures your responsibility to let you know that you have to have that money earmarked. I believe, by the end of the year, or you're gonna lose it.
This year?
This year. You aren't having spent, but it has to be earmarked, you have to send in paperwork, telling them what you're gonna do with it.
I thought the regulations said December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
No, well, it's gotta be spent by then, but you have to have it earmarked by the end of this year, so. It's October, so you're gonna wanna move on that and have all that stuff. And you can probably call Margaret over at Edana City Hall, cause she just is in the middle of that process right now, because. Edana went ahead and earmarked their money for recreation, yeah, on this week at the meeting.
Right.
And they're a little ahead of the game, like, you guys have some time, but.
Not much.
Could it be changed after you earmarked?
No.
You have to do with that.
And they just put it towards, you know, park, you know, the, the.
Generic?
No, Miller Park needs to. Miller Park needs to.
The funds all went to Miller Park.
Yeah, so that's what they're gonna do with it, so I mean. You guys are gonna have to put your heads together and come to an agreement on what you wanna do with it, that's within the parameters of. How you can spend it, that's the biggest part of it.
Well, that's what I was trying to look, how we can spend it, the only thing I'm seeing here, here. Eligible uses of these funds include premium, premium pay for essential workers, investment in water. Sewer and broadband infrastructure. The only thing that, the only thing I see in this that would benefit us would be either. The storm surge, or if. We needed, um. Something done out at the wood bin.
Well, broadband would be for everyone.
What about pumping tanks?
No.
That's, that's considered maintenance.
It would be a, um.
How much do you guys get?
Not, not.
Like twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Both replacing that valve out there would be maintenance, too.
Edana got two hundred and something, they spent most of it on that. Stormwater.
Yeah, yeah.
That storm drain project on Highway six.
Right, yeah.
And then they brought about sixty left over, and that's gonna go towards, I mean, it don't really go that far, I mean.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, twenty-six thousand is it gonna do? Doubtfully would make a damn broadband. You guys got something with the lagoon, you could push it towards, you know what I mean, something real nice you could do for the park to, there's a lot of kids that live here.
Yeah, for everybody, something that's for everybody.
For everybody.
I know we had talked years before. We have basketball goal and stuff, and getting basketball goal put up here.
That would be nice.
And then, uh, using either. The existing concrete that's there. Or, well, there's one part of it that's still good.
Very young. Does that?
In it, Rex? On that far corner.
Yeah. And, and, and a lot of it's going to the, I mean, it's.
It's chipping off, but I mean, we could, this is just an idea. Get that gone.
Get.
And, but, no, 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 just bear with me just a minute, please. The, where the old school sat, get that concrete, get it clear out of there. Because we've known, I've known up here at times. The kids in town like taking chunks of concrete and throwing it out in the grass.
Sure.
You hit them with the lawnmower, you tear up your lawn, okay, Rex is, been, done the same thing. The old rock, the old. Concrete blocks that's there are deteriorating, there is some red brick. It's also deteriorating, but I don't know if we could. Get that tore up. And get a new fresh pad down and a basketball goal. For this or not.
That would be.
I don't, I do not know, I don't know what the cost of stuff is, the concrete is. Last I knew was a hundred and twenty-five dollars a yard.
I was gonna say about a hundred and twenty-five.
It does not go very far, a yard does not go very far. And we don't have to make a regulation basketball goal, you know, uh.
You'd probably have to do at least thirty yards minimum, probably take more than that, thirty yards, that's gonna be, what, five thousand dollars? Plus, the, the biggest part is gonna be the labor, getting all the other stuff out.
Not yet, doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna take a little bit of stuff to get that out.
So, but the storm surge thing, the only bad thing about that, you about have to have an engineer come in. And, and he's gonna have to say, well, this is what's gonna be done, up to grade and all this stuff, and, and by the time he's done, he's probably gonna charge. Half of the money, and it's not gonna go anywhere. That's just my, that's just my thoughts on it, I mean.
I mean, we could, we, the playground equipment there is about. Let me think here, four or five years old. My two girls lived in town, they went out and raised the money for that playground equipment.
And they didn't want anybody to know who did it.
Nice girl.
And, uh, I mean, probably, as long as it's been there, it needs some upkeep, you know, I mean, we can look at that. But, um.
I, I mean, I didn't realize that the end was coming this quick, I thought it was another year, according to the website.
That's what we thought, I think, last month, three, four months before the, another year, we thought we had a year.
Why are you against broadband?
Because ninety-five percent of the people in town have internet, right here. Why pay for broadband?
Our plan is, is in the works of putting fiber in all over the damn.
Everything's down there by the, by their office. It's already here.
I understand that, but it's another added bill for the, the community. For the town to have. And, you, you know, and if we got broadband, well, there, everybody'd be going, well, we got, say, we got. We have to have it, you know, or we had to sign up for it or something. We have to have it, you know, or we had to sign up for it or something like that, and I, I don't, if we're getting five G. Fiber optics here. Within one year, if I remember, if I.
Well, let's, let's talk about the kids that actually live here that need broadband because. Knox County Schools uses nothing but iPads. Like during COVID, they had to be home using that broadband or Wi-Fi connection of some kind to do their homework and do their. Whatever, okay, so we're, we're hoping, I'm hoping. There's more families who move here with kids, they're all gonna be in the same school, that is not gonna change, and it benefits every family.
Another thing back to this, the kids being home during COVID. Knox County School supplied them with a hotspot box for each student.
My, my grandkids, it didn't work over there because they're so far down, so they had to come to my house to use my Wi-Fi to do their homework. That's all I'm asking you, why you have an, uh, broadband is off your list, off your list.
Most of the, the peak, most of our. Residents in, in, in our town. Are sixty five.
I understand that. And the more, the more they move out, somebody has to come take their place, correct? Just kinda like we went from a hundred and thirty nine to a hundred and two people. People will die out, and if we do not bring younger families in here with kids. And have something to offer them, they're not gonna come here. And there won't be a town because it's gonna be, you know, fifty people by the end of this century, I'm sure.
This broadband's gonna make that bigger difference when they already got fiber.
Who has fiber? We don't have fiber here.
I've got fiber.
I don't have air. Don't have a telephone, don't have satellite.
Well, you're getting it through, uh, satellite.
No, I'm getting fiber optics from Mark Twain, through fiber optics. Yeah, and I've had, I've had it for, was it fifteen years ago they put it in? I thought everybody had.
No. Never even heard of it.
Maybe I'll talk to Mark Twain.
Oh, maybe it's true. I could probably find out what it would cost for broadband anyway.
You haven't checked into that?
No, but I would.
What's it gonna cost people to use it?
Don't know, that's why I said I'll check in, but.
It's gonna cost quite a bit. What thirty thousand you gonna install?
I'm gonna pay the five bucks a month for Mark Twain, for what I've got, and I, I only got a top one, I got the next.
Me too.
It's probably like eighty.
Ninety two dollars and forty cents is what.
But.
Cause you have to get a phone.
That, that's where I was going, I don't have a phone line to get the, the Wi-Fi or fiber. You have to have a lamp.
Yeah, that should change, but.
It should, it should change a long time ago.
Forty years ago. I can talk to Mark Twain and get some information.
You should get some Mark Twain, get a built-in Wi-Fi.
There's a guy's name Jim.
Yep.
Well, we need to check on somebody that can turn that cement stuff out out here. Get an estimate of what it should cost. Well, I think I'll have to put some bids in, I can, if you guys want me to, I can call Margaret and talk to her to get the lowdown.
I think that would be probably our first. To, our first start to see where we can spend the money. And then.
When it has to be spent, when it has to be allotted.
Yes, and then we can.
And what forms and whatnot has to be submitted.
If we need forms, we need to get. See, this is October, so we better get, better get busy. And then, like, if we, uh. Know what forms we need, we could have. We could just have a, a, not really a meeting.
Or you can have a special meeting.
A special meeting to go over, to go over what we found out, where we can spend the money, what for, or not. I, I, I can check on that too, Sue, if, if you.
No, I have more time than you, I'll take care of it.
I wish I had more time.
Yeah.
Got lots of stuff to do.
Some days I do too.
Nothing, no, um, we're, I get, we're still on new business. I'm sorry, okay, on the. Ordinances that we have taken to Jordan Force Law Office. Do we know any more updates on that?
She filed her stuff September twenty twenty one with the Circuit Clerk Office, it's up to the sheriff now. He's gonna file a ticket, and then here goes to Jordan.
Have you, have we talked to him, being with a new sheriff?
I, I have.
I have not, no.
Well, I did, because he said that, that Jordan had to. Be in contact with him or write up a ticket or whatever, and the way I understood it, he was gonna get ahold of her, but.
Jordan's already filed the paperwork, it was two thousand and twenty one minutes filed. Which gives him permission to do what he needs to do.
Oh, for, for, for the agreement. For the sheriff, or the, their department to enforce, enforcing, yes, yes, that's been filed, but.
Doesn't he start the ticket?
He has to get ahold of her and they have to work together to get a court date and all that stuff, and the way, and, uh. I talked to Alan for sure, and I'm pretty sure I talked to Carl, Carl too, but I can, I can do it again. Uh, because probably I'll just go to Edina and, and talk to Margaret about this anyway, so. About, about the COVID, or the ARPA money.
Well, they told, when I talked to someone, I can't remember who I talked to up at the, uh, courthouse. Uh, they said that everything was ready, but they also mentioned that we had to print tickets. Basically city of novelty on the ticket that he writes or something like that, and that I remember asking you about that. A couple of months ago, but you said you don't print any tickets, so I wasn't sure what that was about.
I have no idea what that's all about. City's never, well, the city's never been able to do anything in the past.
I've never gotten a ticket, but doesn't it say city of novelty, or city of ferrying, or when they write the ticket?
Doesn't the ticket come?
I mean, cause our ordinances are different, right?
Comes from the, from the, the way I understand it, it comes from, from the lawyer and then sent to the sheriff. And then he.
Writes a ticket?
No, I know, he. He serves the, serves the citation, but the court date has to be all set up and everything between the sheriff and. And, and all that, so I need to go in and talk to him a little bit more about that. I was thinking that I talked to him before, but.
You know what, I would be at the courthouse, let's take care of that kinda thing, municipal billing and, or the municipal, um. Funds and tickets and. I talked to somebody, I can't remember what her name is.
Uh, the circuit clerk.
Yes.
Does things like accepts payment on tickets that are issued?
Well, she, she's the one that looked it up and said, yeah, you guys are ready to go, you just need to print tickets and then.
And give them out? So, just so I'm understanding this correctly. You're in an agreement with the sheriff's office, so the sheriff's office can enforce your city ordinances. So. The way I understand, the way that works is when someone is in violation of an ordinance. The sheriff has the power to cite them.
Right, I guess maybe that's what I was talking about, instead of a ticket, it's a citation.
The way the process works for that, and I'm not a lawyer. But the way the process works is. The citation is issued, the copy of that citation goes, one goes to the person that gets. Issued, the other person that gets it is the prosecutor. The prosecutor will look at that ticket and the prosecutor will be the one to submit it into the court system. And then that's when usually, sometimes you have a pre-written date in a bigger town. You're gonna, everyone's gotten a ticket, it's already, you've got your court date usually on that ticket, like it's the patrol, there's a. High poss, high probability that it, it won't work this way. They get, they get a citation and then after it filters into the courthouse. Then the circuit clerk will likely send out a summons to attend court on this day. At this time, because these are municipal. Violations, not necessarily like state law violations, so it's just a different kinda classification. But once it gets inserted into the court system, then you get in front of a judge and you go into the process of all of that getting figured out. But as far as like them handling it for anyone, that's not how it works, it's just. It's a process. You know, and it, it, all it is is about getting the ball rolling into the process.
Is the one that has to write the citation then?
Or the sheriff or an agent, you know, law enforcement agent working on behalf of the sheriff.
And then the sheriff needs to get with the city's attorney.
Yeah, and so it's a process, you know, they write it, they write a ticket. You get a copy of the ticket, they take the ticket back and they hand it over to the next rung on the ladder, which will be the prosecutor's office. It'll sit on the prosecutor's desk until they file it with the circuit clerk. Then it, it's, so it's not sitting anywhere where they're just gonna handle it, like it's moving through the system. Of course, the prosecutor, once they file any kind of charge and they're kind of on deck to.
To prosecute it or.
Right, to litigate it, basically, so they're putting themselves on deck to. See it through the court process to represent basically you guys, represent this, the town of novelty.
Does go to court, doesn't the lawyer have to be there?
Your lawyer doesn't have to be there.
No, because it's the prosecuting attorney in Knox County that's representing the city of novelty. In court.
Technically, he represents the state.
Well, but, yeah, I mean, as far as what side they take or whatever.
Yeah, and I don't know what happens if you get into a situation where if a prosecutor looks at the ticket and says, no, I'm not gonna be able to prosecute this. Then it wouldn't go in through, you know what I mean, like the prosecutor. Basically decides if there's enough evidence and all of that to push any case forward. It comes out of law enforcement hands as soon as it hits their office. So, um, so, it all comes through them, so. The buck doesn't really stop anywhere, once you get into that process, the buck doesn't really stop anywhere except for with the judge who will decide. What's gonna happen, if they, you know what I mean, into the process of it all, so.
Anything else on old business?
You're trying, yeah.
What about that outstanding bill we talked about last time?
We got it.
Is it gonna be paid?
Nope. You'll get what I got, and that's it.
You got all files? That's what you were charged for?
Nope, didn't.
So how did you come up with your part that you were willing to pay? Just a random number or?
No, I just feared four hours was fair.
How do you know how long it took?
I don't, because he gave me five years of stuff I never asked for, so I can't really say. How long it took him, that's why I thought four hours was generous, to pull out four different files and, uh, have her scan them.
Don't you have to, uh, pay so much per sheet of paper?
No. No, it wasn't a sheet of paper. They were on a flash drive. If Rex were to copy them, then yes, I would have to pay him ten cents a copy, but he didn't do that. I think we're done with old business.
So your sheriff is using to pay the nine hundred and sixty seven five?
Correct, I'll pay you sixty dollars for the four documents that I received of the seventeen documents that I requested.
Then Jordan Force is lying that she sent forty three files in.
I'm sorry?
Then our attorney is lying, not saying, or saying that she sent forty three files and.
She did send forty three, she did send. I said she sent forty three files. Four of them are put on my list, my list was seventeen. And four of those items were sent to me on a flash drive, along with. Five years of financial statements, minutes, and whatever else. Had nothing to, nothing I requested. And that was the bait, the bulk of the files that were on that flash drive. The four files that I told you I asked for are the ones that I'm going to pay for, if and when you accept my payments. I do not believe I should have to pay for five years of financial statements, whether it took him that time or not. Whether he was following what the attorney told him. I asked for specific things, I did not ask for five years of files, and I do not believe I should have to pay for something. I didn't ask for. None of you would do that, ever, go into a store and pay for something that you didn't get.
When I get a bill, I gotta pay it, I don't get to pay half. I, my fertilizer company comes, I tell them twenty acres.
Pick up your phone and say, you know, if you agreed to loan an amount, great, if you didn't. It is what it is, I have plumbers come to my house, I pay them what they tell me. I pay all my bills.
Well, not this one.
It's not my bill. You go into a store and or, and buy a pair of pants and they say you have to, uh, pay for three shirts too. And you would do that? I don't think so. You used the electricity. I did not get or ask for five years of financials, whether it took him eighty hours to collect it. Or if it took him ten hours, it makes no difference, I didn't ask for it. I've read you the list of things, documents that I asked for, and then last month, I told you off of the list. What four things that I had asked for that I received. Period, I don't know why that's so hard.
What the lawyer.
I know that.
And she sent the information to the Attorney General. And he closed the complaint. So, there it is.
So, there it is.
That's right.
I didn't ask for it, I didn't ask for it, I'm not gonna pay for it, so I don't care what you and the attorney decided, has nothing to do with it. You don't have any control, you don't have any control over what I asked for. I asked for specific things, you gave me a bunch of crap besides that, that I didn't ask for. I didn't ask for it, it was useless to me.
Did you look at it?
No. I looked for the four things that were on my list, I looked for the other thirteen things that I didn't get, that were not on that flash drive. That's what I looked at. I have no, no interest in five years of minutes. I have no interest in the last five years of financials, I never have, and it was not on my list. And I have emails to her, here's my list, I have emails to Rex, here's my list. And nothing changed, never once did I ask for five years of financials, not once did I ask for five years of minutes.
Did you open the files?
No.
Then how are you doing what they were?
Cause it says right on there, October minutes, November financials, it says on the name of the file on the flash drive. And what difference does it make? I didn't ask for it and I'm not gonna pay for it.
So you're gonna keep all the money and house and your building?
No, I'm gonna have my lawyer take care of it.
We're gonna have a lawyer do it.
Didn't you ask him?
Haven't come to meet him and we'll talk to him.
Why didn't you ask him?
Haven't come to meet him and we'll talk to him.
No, I don't think so, I'm paying the bill, not you. He's my lover, not yours.
Well, then how am I supposed to ask him?
Well, you'll, you'll get some information, I'm sure you'll be able to reply.
Like you did with Attorney General in that case from the late.
The first one did.
We'll leave a piece.
Not the second one.
I called me for a jury.
I'll second that one.
Kim makes motion to adjourn, sue seconds, all in favor? All right. Everybody's in favor.